This time I'll call the October meeting of the Haywood County Board of Education to order. This time I'd like to ask for everyone to rise for our Pledge of Allegiance. Proceeded by our invocation given by Mr. Jimmy Rogers. Everyone please rise. Gracious heavenly Father, thank you again for this opportunity to be here tonight. Thank you for the accomplishments of the children of Haywood County Schools. Thank you for the accomplishment of the teachers and staff to make Haywood County Schools in the top 10% of the state of North Carolina. Lord, we pray that you've guided us and you'll continue to guide us to make the best decisions to help Haywood County Schools be the best in the state and the best in the country. Lord, we want to educate children and we want to do the best job we can. Lord, we pray that we always have the diligence and abilities to treat people right, work with people, work with children, and work with our educators, work with our state governments. Give us the guidance and abilities and the strength to get through all these things, Lord. We'll always give you the praise and the glory for all of it. Thank you for all you do for us. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Under our announcements, I'd like to announce that our next regular board meeting will be held here at the Education Center on November the fourteenth. That's after the election. Does anybody been watching any of the election stuff? Really don't want to. Anyway, November the fourteenth at 7:00 PM at the Education Center here. Also, board members, this week, the North Carolina School Board Association School Law Conference is going on over in Asheville, October twelfth to the fourteenth. Also, I'd like to remind everyone, the North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference is coming up in November sixteenth to the eighteenth in Greensboro, North Carolina. And we'll talk a little bit more about that later on in the agenda. We do need to select some voting delegates to represent the Haywood County Board of Education on their issues. Are there any other announcements that need to be made? Under Agenda Adjustments, I do have some items. The Building and Grounds Committee met this afternoon, and they have several items that need to be taken care of, and so we will add them between item number sixteen and seventeen. We'll do them right after the Finance Committee meeting to allow some buildings that need to be taken care of tonight. Now, at this time, I'll recognize Dr. Anne Garrett for some recognition.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, if you would, please come and stand by me. Mr. Ledgewood, Mr. Henson, Ms. Chenigle, Ms. Milner, Mr. Francis, Mr. Rogers. Mr. Francis, Mr. Patrick, and Mr. Rogers, please.
Mass act for late.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, at the September twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen Regional North Carolina School Board Association meeting, our Board of Education was given the Golden Bell Award. So I'd like to read to you this time. The Gold Bell Award for the whole board training, Haywood County Board of Education for Training Excellence and Commitment to the two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen North Carolina School Board Association Academy Year of the North Carolina School Boards Association Academy of School Boards, Mr. Stevens. So congratulations to each of you.
To follow up on that, I'd just like to say that I appreciate Jimmy Rogers being able to go with us over the district meeting, and that does count for some more continuing education credit. So Jimmy and I'll battle it out on who's gonna get the most continuing education credit hours. And I'd like to personally say thank you to this board for the dedication in taking that credit, continuing education credit requirement, state law requirement, seriously in completing the required educational credits in the given year. So thank you, and you're to be congratulated. It took some effort, and I appreciate that, and I know that the community supports that. Now I'd like to recognize Ms. Brandy Stevens.
No short jokes, please. All right, Chairman Francis, members of the board, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, we're here tonight for some special recognitions for the EC department. We're gonna start with, and I'm gonna read from some memos from the EC department. The EC Division Program Improvement and Professional Development Section met to select individuals for the North Carolina State Improvement Project Regional Coach Support Role. The PIPD team engaged in a rigorous selection process involving a variety of criteria that included peer recommendations and leadership endorsements. And we are pleased to announce that out of a very competitive and qualified pool of applicants, Carla Mountain was selected to work as a North Carolina School Improvement Regional Coach for our Western Region. So Carla, if you'll come up.
Certificate of Recognition. This certificate of recognition is awarded to Carla Mountain for being honored as Dyslexia Delegate and Regional Coach for Western Region, awarded the tenth day of October two thousand sixteen by Haywood County Schools.
All right, so that just means that about twenty days out of every month, Carla will be working for helping our region with professional development for the EC teachers in the region and serving as a consultant, helping them to know what we need in terms of to support our teachers. So we're very honored, and we'll be the first to receive professional development in our region, which is great, and so we'll be hosting that. It's a big honor to have been selected out of all those people. So while she's up here, Dr. Garrett also read Dyslexia Delegate on her certificate. So I wanted to let you know that in honor of Dyslexia Awareness Month, and I put something at your seats, we're also honoring Carla today as being selected as a Dyslexia Delegate, and that means that she'll be providing professional development, again, to our region. She was selected out of a pool of applicants in order to provide this professional development. She had to go through a rigorous training this summer and has come back to train our teachers, as well as all the teachers in the region, so we're excited about that. So congratulations, Carla. I think you're done. All right, so the next thing on the agenda is, while you guys are up here, we'll change. I want to also recognize, every year we select as a department an educator of excellence for the EC department, and that person is, one person from every district in North Carolina is honored at the EC Conference, Annual EC Conference, and so tonight we wanna honor those nominees, as well as our educator of excellence. So first nominee is Melissa Collins. EC teacher at Bethel Elementary. Also from Bethel Elementary, Kathy Boyer. Having two teachers from one school nominated was an honor, so awesome. Next, our physical therapist for the county, Mary Beth Brown. Okay, and EC teacher from Canton Middle School, Rhonda Wester. Okay, and we have two folks that weren't able to be here tonight. The teacher for our Bridges Program, which is our day treatment program at the elementary level, Daphne Buchanan at North Canton Elementary, and our school psychologist, Melinda Rogers. Neither were able to be here tonight. Okay. Coach Goodwin is selfless in every sense of the word. Her commitment and devotion to her students and their families is second to none. Serena is a problem solver in that she never panics when faced with a challenge. I believe that isn't part of what made her such a great coach. She is an asset to our school and school system, and we should be prepared to hire three employees to replace her whenever she decides to retire. Her dedication and commitment to her students is something that is rare and that we are so thankful for. Serena Goodwin from Pisgah High School. I'd like to see Serena at elementary school. I don't know what that would look like. Serena will be honored at the EC Conference in November, and she's going to represent Haywood County, and we're all gonna be there as a team to congratulate her and support her. So congratulations to everybody, and congratulations to Serena for being named Educator of Excellence for the EC Department. Good job.
I guess Serena.
What?
All right, then you have to let me ready. I'm just gonna click it, I'm not gonna count for ya.
All right, and the very la, not the very last, but one other recognition is I wanted to brag on our EC department. We were also named as a Best Practice Center for one of five in the whole state, and so we are, teachers will come to us for professional development, and we got a little bit of extra money, forty thousand dollars, in order to provide that. And so we also are gonna serve as a best practice site for EC teachers from other districts to be able to come and see what good instruction looks like and to see what we're made of to be in the top ten percent, right? So we're excited about that, so we wanted to let you guys know about that tonight, too. All right, we also want to honor Mr. Steve Brown with the ARC. He wants to honor us, but we want to honor him, too. That we want. All right, so this certificate is in appreciation for Steve Brown and the ARC for providing grants and support to our EC teachers, so he's gonna talk about all of them in a minute, right?
Sure.
All right, so thank you, Steve.
Thank you. You want me to do it now or wait?
What?
Come back.
Oh, you do?
Yes.
I like getting stuff.
You do, like, have a chat?
Yeah.
Can I say something?
No, just a minute. And so Steve Brown and the ARC gave our EC teachers over eighty-two hundred dollars in grants, and so we're gonna honor some of those folks tonight and also say thank you to Steve and the ARC for that. So go ahead.
You want me to now I can talk?
Yeah.
Y'all got about fifteen minutes? No, I'm kidding. I do just wanna real briefly thank the school system and thank the teachers for applying for the grants and being able to award over eight thousand dollars in grants, and I just wanna take a brief second and tell you where that money comes from. This money that we use for grant programs for the EC teachers comes from United Way, and we were fortunate enough to be one of the few organizations this year was funded completely for what we asked to be funded for. So as a recipient of United Way funds, I also would like to make a plug that when you all do your United Way, if you've not already done it, to please encourage everybody in this room to consider at least giving a dollar a pay period to United Way, because we're a direct benefit of you participating in giving back to the school system, and you can designate nonprofits for your entire donation to go back to the ARC of Haywood County. I didn't say that. Or you could give it to the Haywood County Schools Foundation, which I was a part of for over ten years, so please consider, when United Way comes, to please consider making a donation to United Way, because it benefits us and allows us to do the wonderful things we do with adults who have ADD diagnosis. So thank you all for doing that, and I actually have a check, because the teachers have already got the money, and I need to make sure that Angie Gardner has money to put back in the bank, because she may not, but I actually have a check to present to you for eighty-two hundred and forty-two dollars for the grants for the two thousand sixteen year. Thank you.
I'm gonna call up some of the folks that receive grants. April Wilson. Courtney Phillips and Pauline Wilson. Serena Goodwin. I think the rest of me. Kathy Boyer. Mary Beth Brown. Melanie Ash. Melissa Collins. Talina Royer. Lisa Cook. We had other folks that received grants as well, but these folks came tonight to show their appreciation to Steve and for their ARC grant, so thank you so much, Steve and the ARC.
I always screw it. I'm afraid to do what I did it.
Thank you.
Yeah, I've got it in my head just big early, man.
Thank you to all those involved in the EC department and the recognitions and the recipients tonight. Thank you so much for your hard work and dedication to Haywood County Schools. Thank you. Now, the board would like to recognize Ms. Allison Francis. Would you want us to, will you just hang on for a second?
Sorry about that. Chairman Francis, board members, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, I'm here tonight to give you a brief update on the school wellness policy. On June thirtieth, 2004, the President signed the Child Nutrition and WIC Reauthorization Act of two thousand and four. Section two oh four of this law required school districts participating in the National School Meals Program to establish a local school wellness policy by year two thousand and six. Our original policy was created in two thousand and five, and we met this goal. This was reinforced and expanded in the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act of two thousand and ten, and our current policy was last updated of March of two thousand and sixteen. The Healthy Hunger-Free Kids Act two thousand and ten now requires that the local school wellness policy at a minimum include the following requirements. The Wellness Committee needs to consist of parents, students, school food authority representative, PE teachers, school health professionals, school board, school administrators, and the general public. The people that serve on this committee for us include administrators myself, Alisa, Alex Macirelli, and Mark Shepherd. Our student representative is Shelby Glantz from Tuscola High School. Our school nurses serve. Chuck Francis is our school board representative. Our social workers attend, and many community partners, such as Healthy Haywood, Parks and Rec, Smoky Mountain Center, Mountainwise, Meridian, Cooperative Extension, the Health Department, and the Haywood County Sheriff's Department. The Wellness Policy also requires that there's content on nutrition promotion, nutrition education, physical activity, and other school-based activities that promote student wellness, such as mental health. We're also required to monitor, assess, and evaluate the policy and have a plan for measuring its effectiveness that is measured periodically, and we're to give an annual progress report to the board, so that's why I'm here tonight. We're also asked to inform and update parents, students, staff, and the community about the content and the implementation of the Wellness Policy. Last month, we conducted a Wellness Policy Assessment Survey with the principals, and the following are a few questions that we had them answer. What percentage of your staff is aware of this local school wellness policy? Fifty percent of our schools reported that seventy-six to a hundred percent of their staff was aware of it. Twelve point five percent said twenty-six to fifty percent of their staff was aware of the policy. Fifty-one, excuse me, thirty-one point three percent said zero to twenty-five percent of their staff was aware of the policy. Is a copy of the local wellness policy in your student handbook? Eighty-seven point five percent said no, there was not a copy of the wellness policy in the student handbook, and twelve point five percent said yes. Does your school have links to nutrition education for parents from your school website? Ninety-three point eight percent stated that they did not have any links, and six point two percent said that they did. Now, we do have links to wellness and nutrition education on the child nutrition webpage and through our menus, so if parents were to click on a menu through the school, it would bring them to a website that had nutrition information available. So while they may not know that they have that available on their website, it is. Do your teachers integrate nutrition education into their core curriculum areas such as math, science, social studies, and language arts, as well as in non-core and elective subjects? Sixty-eight point eight percent said they did this, and thirty-one point three percent said no. Do you have a set of established rules for food and beverages brought from home for classroom events or parties? Seventy-five percent of the schools responded yes, and almost all of those were our elementary schools that have such policies in place, and the other twenty-five percent said that they did not have a policy in place. Do your teachers use food as a reward in the classroom? Sixty-two point five percent reported no, and thirty-seven point five percent reported yes. One of the reasons that we still have a lot of folks doing this, it is not a regulation that they cannot, it is recommended that they don't, but it is not required. It's a low-cost way for the teachers to reward the students, and we do have someone that's on our SHAC that's trying to find some grant money to provide special things for a teacher's treasure chest type thing for the classroom, so she's trying to look for some options for us to use, such as stickers and pencils and things like that. Do your teachers use food as a punishment in the classroom? This is strictly forbidden, and luckily, everybody said one hundred percent, no. You cannot withhold food, such as special breakfast and lunch.
I was saying about making them eat something, didn't I?
The withholding of food. Do your teachers incorporate opportunities for physical activity into the classroom whenever possible, and a hundred percent said that they did do this, such as little stretch breaks, energizers throughout the day to get the kids up and moving? One of the questions was, do you feel there's adequate mental health services provided at your school? And we had a fifty-fifty split there, and the next question we asked, what they'd like to see in mental health training, and several of the items that they discussed were dealing with multiple emotional and mental impairments, effective strategies for students with ADHD, parental neglect, parental drug use, and living with grandparents, trauma education, how mental health impacts school, working with students with mental issues, and suicide and bullying. What did we learn from our assessment? Well, first of all, we need to do a much better job of making sure that faculty and parents are aware of the policy and its contents. I would like to recommend to all the principals that that is included in the handbook that goes home every year, so that we're covered there, because we know every child brings one of those home. It is on our website for viewing, and it needs to be presented at more staff meetings and possibly going to the countywide PTA meetings. We are meeting the requirements for nutrition and physical education that are required, and we learned that principals would like to have more resources and training on mental School wellness is important, because while children are eating more, they are also exercising less, and this can affect not only their weight, but their attitude, academic performance, and their overall well-being. Any questions on our SHAC? I said SHAC earlier, and just to let you know, that is kind of an acronym for the program, even though it's called the Wellness Policy, our group is the School Health Advisory Council, so that's SHAC.
Any questions for Ms. Francis?
Thank you very much.
I guess the question would be, that I have, is would it be very difficult for us to add a link on our website, the Haywood County Schools' main website, for a link for the policy?
It's there, it's already there.
It's on there, okay.
It is. It's under the Parent Community section of the page, yes. It is up there.
We could fix that tonight if it wasn't.
Yeah, no, it's there. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much. Board members, you've had an opportunity to look at both the open and closed session minutes from our last meeting. This time we entertain a motion to be approved as presented. Mr. Henson, the second of Mr. Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, I'm gonna back up, I made a mistake. Now's the time for open session. Ms. King, has anyone signed up to address the board this evening? Okay. All right, next we have Dr. Anne Garrett with our parent advisory councils from each individual's go.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, as per General Statute one fifteen C dash fifty-five advisory councils, I ask for your approval for the following advisory councils as presented.
Okay. Everyone have a chance to look at it, any questions on this? This time we entertain a This time, we entertain a motion to be approved as presented.
I move.
Ms. Miller's made the motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Shandival. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Garrett. As I mentioned in our opening announcements, the annual conference is coming up, and we will need to, it's my understanding that it would be three delegates. I think in the past, we did four, and I think it might have been an error. But I think our local funding, what the local is, around 16 million, is that correct? So that would allow us three voting delegates, and then we'd elect one alternate to, in case somebody couldn't be to the meeting, got sick, or had another emergency come up. But I've had one board member ask me to serve on that, and he's already volunteered. Mr. Jimmy Rogers, would you be willing to serve, as you said you would?
All right, we've made it public now, would anyone else like to serve as a voting delegate at our annual conference?
I'll be optimistic and say I would like to serve.
Yeah, there is a certain question.
There's a little question.
You'd still be a board member even at that time. Through November 30th, anybody else? Mr. Henson, would you like to serve?
Yes, I would.
And then your alternate would be Mr. Rogers.
No, you're gone. I'll be down there. If you're not there, I'll be.
Okay, we'll do this, then we have three delegates and two alternates, okay? So you'll be included in the pool, Mr. Kirkpatrick. That's being a politically correct way. This time, I'll entertain a motion that we approve. Mr. Francis, Mr. Jimmy Rogers, and Mr. Henson as our voting delegates with our two alternates, Mr. Bobby Rogers first, and second alternate will be Mr. Kirkpatrick. Is that okay? All right, now here, motion to that effect.
Motion to.
Mr. Henson's made the motion, I hear a second.
I'll second it.
Second, Ms. Shandival. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor? I'd just like to state that the North Catholic Board Association did present the platform that we have, and I would suggest you take a look at it before you go to the meeting and make sure you're kind of familiar with it, what they'll be advocating for, because they won't advocate outside of what this voting delegates approve. Anyway, any other discussion? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Next, on our agenda, we have our merit pay plan for Mr. Barbie.
Chairman Francis, board members, Dr. Garrett, Dr. Nolte, thank you for having me tonight. The merit pay committee, we have done our due diligence. We've submitted a plan for your approval for the merit pay. Just to reiterate, we've met twice, September 14th and September 19th. The parameters must be hired by seven, one of sixteen. Dual employees that all be evaluated for the pay based upon their primary job description, such as if you had a custodian, this is a bus driver, whatever their primary position would be, that would be the evaluation used. The employee could have no current discipline. The employee's last evaluation average to be above standard, then they'd be eligible for a full share. If the employee's last evaluation average to be at standard, then they would be eligible for a half share. Full-time employees are eligible for a full share. Part-time employees would be eligible for a half share. Kinda, when it's all written down, it's kinda easier to follow, but any questions?
Any questions, board members?
I just want to thank you for your service and what you brought to us.
Happy to do it.
I think that it would be very important to realize that we did an in-depth study of this at our work session. This plan took a lot of work and effort, and I wanted to say thank you in public again for that work, and also to say that we're gonna take care of those folks that are on our local payroll, rather than not looking for those folks also that we take care of, and in child nutrition.
With your blessings, I'll send out an email tonight to our committee.
And also be sure that the media gets a good understanding of what this is. This is being dictated by some general statute legislation that we needed to do this, and when I first saw that, I just couldn't imagine how you could come up with a plan, and they've done it, and I dare to be commended. Thank you so very much. At this time, we entertain a motion, we approve the plan as presented.
So I move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rogers, Chairman Rogers made the motion, second, Mr. Leatherwood. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Barbie. Now, we have Mr. Shepherd for a little while on our agenda. He's got several items to bring to us tonight. He's wearing one of those three or four hats he wears tonight, so he's wearing two or three of them tonight.
Yep, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I have for your approval tonight the safe school plans for the schools. We have all those turned in now and in place, and we don't put those, you know, out to the public or to the mood or anything like that. If you have any questions about those at any time, you know, we'll have this in Dr. Garrett's office, where it's handy, you know, if the district administration needs those, but y'all are, you know, always welcome to ask questions or come in, you know, it'll be laid open for you, but we try to keep a close eye on those, so they don't just go anywhere.
A little bit confidential for a good reason.
Yes, they are.
Very good. Any questions for Mr. Shepherd? If not, I'd entertain a motion that we approve the safe school plans as presented.
I move, we approve it.
Okay. Ms. Miller's made the motion, second, Mr. Leatherwood. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
I think you're next on the agenda, as I look at you.
Yes. Okay, so for the first read, policy 9030, that is the policy that we have suggested to control change orders for construction contracts, okay? And that is all that this pertains to. This is not any other kind of contracts. And as it stands now, the language that you have on the version you have would be $30,000 change order, and below could be done by the superintendent. Above that would have to come for board approval. But like you guys have noted in past discussions, in the last building projects, we've brought pretty much everything to you guys. So I think that's a pretty safe number to go with there.
Okay. There was some discussion that the board may want to go ahead and suspend the rules. Is that what the board would like to do tonight, to go ahead and approve this and get it into place?
Make a motion to suspend rules.
Mr. Bobby Rogers made the motion to suspend the rules for the 30-day table and of the policy, and I have a second, Mr. Francis. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? Again, what you're voting for is just to suspend the rule, so we can vote on it tonight and put it into place. Any questions? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. So now, we will vote on the policy as presented, if we get a motion to that effect. You know, we'll make a motion to approve that policy. Mr. Francis made the motion, and second, Mr. Bobby Rogers. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
This is due to a timely manner that the states restrain upon us. That's part of the reason, we have to have it in place by October the.
Yeah, contracts that are led after October 1st are supposed to be subject to this policy.
That's why we have to, that's why we suspend it, yes.
Any other questions, comments? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Okay, now for second read. There was some conversation in the finance committee about policy 6420, the other policy that deals with just general contracts, and the number was lowered in that one to 30,000, as far as contracts that could be dealt with by the district administration without board approval. But there was some conversation about a provision for emergency situations that might come up, and we're going to try to have worded for you guys by next time, a little clause in there that would be for your approval, but it would discuss the fact that if something came up that was a true emergency that needed to be dealt with before the next board meeting or before even a board meeting could be called in a timely manner, that the district administration could go ahead and do that with provision that they would notify the board chair. So with that being said, that's being, you know, that's being pulled for consideration for tonight, you know, we had talked about getting all these construction and contract policies in place tonight. Definitely don't want to worry about that tonight for 6420.
So 6420 is gonna be tabled for 30 days for further comment, correct?
Right.
So it will be tabled, 6420 will be tabled for 30 days until the next board meeting.
Exactly.
Okay.
As far as 6321, the bus routes, that one still is good, just the way it is. As far as 9120, the wording in it also goes along with 9030, so that one's in good shape, as well as 9130, same thing.
Okay, so I'll entertain a motion that we approve 6321, 9120, and 9130 as presented.
So I move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rogers has made the motion, I hear a second. Second, Mr. Henson, any question or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the hard work of the policy committee.
Yes, thank you.
And thank you, Mr. Rogers, for your work on the policy committee. Thank you very much. Thank you. Next, I'd like to recognize our finance chair, Mr. Jim Francis, for his report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The finance committee has met and reviewed the financial reports. Everything seems to be in order, so at this time, I would like to bring before the board the regular monthly financial reports for approval.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Francis, I hear a second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Kirkpatrick, any question or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
The other thing, I'd like to thank Ms. Gardner for her hard work getting all the reports put together, and she simplified some of the reports as well, so thank you for making that a little easier to understand and read. I appreciate it very much.
Doing a great job, thank you. And thank you to the finance committee and their hard work and dedication to all this. Now, we don't want to forget building and grounds, Mr. Leatherwood.
Mr. Chairman, I have a free thing on building grounds, and first one is, we'd like to surplus 450 lockers at Wainville Middle and D Building. We're gonna put Mr. Putnam up there in charge of surplus in these lockers. He thinks he can auction them off or sell them, whatever, but we're going to get all these lockers out of the hallway up there, and he's got a designated place he's gonna be putting them back when he gets new lockers. But the money that he gets from surplus in these lockers are gonna go back toward replacing with new ones. I'd like to make that in the form of a motion from building grounds.
We have a motion from Mr. Leatherwood to surplus some lockers at Wainville Middle School. I hear a second to the motion.
I'll second it.
Second, Ms. Shandival, any questions or discussion on the motion? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
The second, the maintenance department liked to purchase a dump truck. Cost of this dump truck is gonna be between $40,000 and $4,500. And Joe's gonna, I mean, $1,000, I'm sorry.
Because I want one of those trucks.
Joe's gonna be working on the price of the dump truck. The building grounds like to make a motion that we let him purchase this truck.
Okay. We have a motion for the possible purchase of a dump truck for the maintenance department, and that can be the form of a motion, I hear a second.
Second.
Second, Ms. Miller, any question or discussion on the motion on the floor?
That truck will also be used for other purposes, possibly even the snowplow later on for snow removal. It's got the dump bed on it, so it'll be used winter, summer, it can be used year-round throughout the maintenance facility, and it's a need we've been having for quite some time, especially in the winter time for snow removal on our school properties.
Any other comments, questions?
I was just gonna ask now, where exactly is the money coming from? I mean, I know it's coming out of maintenance, but I mean, do we have $40,000 to buy?
Ms. Gardner?
It will come out of the capital outlet has a small amount of fund balance. So he's gonna use his small capital outlet fund balance to make the income from this year's appropriation from the county. There's a little bit of fund balance money that has built up over the years from salvage, self-salvage, and those interests and those types of things, and I think that's where it's planning on to be some.
Now, when you say dump truck, we're talking about dual-wheel or just a regular little tandem?
It's 550 is the one I am looking at. Or 12.
Any other questions or comments?
It's, I also see some of that money before, we've discussed, or Schlesser has discussed buying a truck for about three years now, and it's just always been getting put off, and that's something that now, that's why some of that surplus is there, because it was discussed last year, and just never did find what they needed for the purposes for maintenance.
Any other questions, comments? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I have one other thing I'd like to call Mr. Smiler's, to talk about a piece of land in Crabtree.
Mr. Chairman, board, at the last meeting, y'all authored, made a motion to begin negotiations with the county for two acres down at the old Crabtree School, and that building grounds has been involved in that, which will result in the following proposed motion for the building and grounds. Move to declare a surplus, the two acres described on the attached Exhibit A, property being part of the old Crabtree School. That two acres are no longer necessary for school purposes. That the property be offered to the county commissioners as acquired by statute based upon the terms of the attached contract, Exhibit B, for use as a public convenience center. That if accepted by the county commissioners, the attached contract will be executed at the next regularly scheduled meeting of the board on November 14th to allow, so as to allow for public input.
I'd like to make that in the form of a motion from building grounds.
Walt says what he said, as a form of a motion. I agree with you, Walt, that's a lot of legal jargon. But anyway, we have a motion from the building and grounds, and I hear a second, second, Mr. Rogers, Jimmy Rogers. Any questions or discussion on the motion on the floor?
Again, this is to declare the land surplus to proceed with what we.
And I'll provide a copy to the press here, this is the contract that's proposed to be entered into, assuming they accept the contract.
Any other questions or comments? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries seven more.
All I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Leatherwood, and thank you, building grounds committee, for the hard work that you have put into all the facilities that we have. Next, we have Dr. Anne Garrett with our personnel.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, for your personnel, excuse me, personnel for information only, you have five separation from employments, two employee status changes, three leave of absences. For your approval, 11 employments, 13 employee status changes, seven contracted services, 22 substitutes, 36 employee coaches, 13 non-employee coaches.
Okay, at this time, is that?
And I'm gonna stop.
Okay, you gonna stop there? Okay, at this time, we entertain a motion, those who have approved as presented, I'll give you a second to mean. And we have a motion from Mr. Kirkpatrick, I hear a second, Mr. Leatherwood. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I'd like to take number 11 by itself under volunteer services.
Okay, we have number 11, and we have one board member that's asked to recuse himself from voting on this, I believe it's Mr. Leatherwood, has requested not to vote on this due to being a family member. So at this time, we entertain a motion that we approve number 11.
So I move, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rogers, Jimmy Rogers has made a motion to approve, did I hear a second?
I'll second it.
Second of Miss Shandival. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven with one abstention.
Mr. Francis, chairman of the board, members of the board, the remaining thirteen volunteer services for approval, and then I have eighty-one bus drivers and their hours as listed.
Okay. This time we entertain a motion, those be approved as presented.
I move to be approved.
Okay, Ms. Millers made the motion, second of Mr. Jim Francis. Any question or discussion on the motion on the floor? There being none, we'll vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else needs to come before the board? Meeting adjourned.